Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council Work-Study Session. Item number one is Call to Order. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city-of-Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco Webex by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. Item number two is Call to the Audience. The city council welcomes public comment at this time for the Issue Review Session and Committee of the whole items on this work-study session agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. I don't have any cards at the table. I'll ask Madam Clerk, do you have any cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
All right, so thank you so much. I'll then look and see, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on any of these agenda items this evening? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I will close that portion of the hearing, and I'll move on to item number three, which is the Issue Review Session. First item here is 3A, Advancing Affordable Housing Through Landlord Engagement. I will call upon Irma Holbe Kane, our Deputy Community Health and Human Services Director for Housing, for a presentation. Irma, good to see you.
Thank you. Mayor Woods, Vice Mayor Adams, council members, Mr. Chin, thank you for having me here today. Progress, forward or onward movement towards a destination. Progress is occurring as we speak by and end our city in the affordable housing space. I know that for some, it might feel a little bit like watching paint dry or grass grow, but the fact of the matter is, while the skyline has not changed overnight since the adoption of the Affordable Housing Strategy back in 2019 and the Hometown for All Initiative in 2021, there is positive movement afoot. Indeed, something special is happening, and this something special is being recognized both locally and nationally. On the heels of 2022, Mayor Woods was recognized by the Arizona Housing Coalition as Advocate of the Year, and then shortly thereafter, the Hometown for All Initiative was recognized as Program of the Year by the Arizona Chapter of the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. And allow me to recognize and congratulate the city on being a finalist in the National League of Cities 2023 City Cultural Diversity Awards Program, recognizing Hometown for All for being a shining example of diversity and total community collaboration and partnership. I understand that the NLC has also asked Mayor Woods to participate on their National Housing Supply Accelerator Steering Committee, where he will be asked to weigh in along with a number of other national experts and be a leading voice for local governments on this critical issue. So congratulations, Mayor. So Hometown for All has done two things. It's created a funding source to help us realize our vision, and it's also inspired the developer community to support our work. And with this momentum, over the past two years, we have accomplished much. Over $1.8 million has been invested in site prep work at our city-owned lots for future development. Another $1.7 million was used to purchase Watson Flowers for future development. About $2.5 million has been used to improve properties and purchase land. $3.3 million has been received in donations by the developer community, and more than $17.5 million has been pledged by developers for future projects. At the same time, the energy behind Hometown for All has propelled the city to take even more action. We've identified other funding sources totaling about $1.8 million to make strategic purchases that can be leveraged and can add hundreds of affordable units in our city in the future. Currently, the city of Tempe is seeking a partner to create a high-density, mixed-income, and urban-mixed-use project of our T-PAC property, where we've requested a minimum of 50% of the units to be affordable. Similarly speaking, another affordable housing partnership will be sought for our Apache Central Center, where we would seek not only 50% of the units or more to be affordable, but we also are pledging to have a grocer in that center. And the delivery of the upcoming Copa Health and Newtown projects that were awarded last year is nearing its final stages of negotiation of law Victoria Commons, and this will bring to Tempe a community consisting of 104 affordable multifamily units, 19 for-sale townhomes, multipurpose office space, a café for both residents in the community at large, and outpatient health services. So why are we doing all of this? Because we know that the housing supply shortage creates a cascade of challenges, particularly for those who are low income. Tempe's affordable housing strategy inherently brings home the idea that the city alone cannot create a hometown for all. It requires the participation of many stakeholders throughout the city. It requires the business community to participate, the developer community, the nonprofit community, and our residents. Today, I would like to talk to you about another critical partner in delivering on the promise of a hometown for all, and that's Tempe landlords. Landlords have significant power in defining housing options for a city, and they play an important role as supply-side actors in shaping urban housing markets like our own. Their importance is no more evident than in delivering the Housing Choice Voucher So since my first Housing Governing Board presentation back in August of '22, I've been sharing the difficulties that the housing authority is experiencing in leasing up our housing vouchers in the private market. Because the rent, at the time, because the rents were a little bit out of whack with what the rents that we were able to pay were out of whack with the rents that are being commanded in our area, that coupled with the idea of a housing unit shortage was really making it difficult for program participants to find housing in our jurisdiction, and not only are they suffering, but so is our program. This adversely affects us in that we're not maximizing the federal revenues that we could be earning to administer this program. And what that translates to is that the Tempe Housing Authority's capacity is not maximized to assist to the best of its ability. In a nutshell, the more people we lease up in housing, the more revenues we earn, the more revenues we earn, the more households we can bring onto the program to assist. Success begets success. So thanks to this council a few short months ago, we addressed the payment standard amounts that we pay landlords in order to be competitive in the market, and we are seeing tremendous success since January of an increase of voucher holders being able to successfully lease up in the city of Tempe. For now, what we're dealing with is scarcity of available units and steep competition for those available units. I'm going to be frank, landlords are often hesitant to lease to voucher holders due to a number of reasons, but notably, the program's perceived administrative burdens or misperceptions about folks who have vouchers. And as a result, the Housing Choice Voucher Program participants have even fewer housing options available to them. For folks that are participating in the Housing Choice Voucher Program, the ability to secure housing that meets their needs depends on the willingness of landlords in the private market to accept housing subsidies. Since 2017, like many housing authorities across the United States and especially in our particular region, the Tempe Housing Authority has been losing landlords willing to accept housing vouchers. And while the Tempe Housing Authority has been hyper-focused on serving and supporting housing program participants, especially during pandemic times, not so much with the landlords. They have largely gone ignored, and it's starting to show up, or it's been showing up in our numbers. So to turn this around and ultimately expand housing options for voucher recipients and encourage landlords to accept our subsidies, the Tempe Housing Authority proposes what our sister cities across Arizona and the nation are using, and that's the execution of incentives, streamlined administrative processes, and improved or much improved customer service support. Tempe Housing Authority has developed a landlord engagement plan of action, and this is designed to increase housing options for the voucher participants. It will be a proactive link between the Tempe Housing Authority and landlords with vacant units. And at the same time, the initiative offers private sector or nonprofit landlords financial stimulus and guarantees, as well as rapid response to their concerns. So we've implemented a handful of strategies already. I can speak to housing navigation. So for example, we have a housing navigator who is on staff with our housing team, and this person actually quite, sometimes even physically, handholds some of our most vulnerable voucher holders in the private market, helping them find units. They also work to coach others through the leasing-up process and helping them find landlords and give them leads for them to go out and look like, but quite literally, sometimes she's out meeting with landlords, advocating on behalf of our voucher holders, and bringing back to the housing specialists available units for them to refer their clients to. Security deposits, well, as you can imagine, coming up with a few thousand dollars for security deposit is a tremendous barrier for voucher holders, especially new ones that are coming onto the program. So to remove this barrier, the Tempe Housing Authority is offering to pay the delta of whatever a voucher holder has saved and the deposit total. So, and just to report, this is working fantastically, and it is removing barriers from people being able to lease up. And finally, our administrative plan is undergoing a full review and revision, and through this experience, we have already identified improvements that are needed in order to streamline our processes and improve our service delivery. What we would be proposing is a damage mitigation fund that can be used in certain circumstances to repay a landlord for losses that they've incurred as a result of damage to their unit that are above and beyond normal wear and tear and cannot be necessarily covered by the total security deposit. We would also seek to institute new unit stimulus to incent the landlord community to join the program and for current landlords to add new units to the program. And finally, we would like to bring on dedicated staff to not only administer this program, but to actively recruit landlords, woo back the landlords who we have lost, and be the proactive link between the Tempe Housing Authority, the landlord, and voucher holder What we are further exploring is the possibility of being able to pay a vacancy bridge. What a vacancy can bring, or a vacancy bridge, they can offset the financial burden that a landlord experiences when a unit is sitting vacant while they're awaiting the initial inspection of a new voucher holder about to move in. We would seek also energy equity programming, and in speaking with council members Garland and Hodge, thank you very much, you've inspired the idea of offering equity, energy equity programming that would benefit not only the landlord, but also reduce the utility costs that are often the responsibility of the voucher holder themselves. Preliminary discussions about this idea have been had with the Sustainability and Resilience Team. And finally, housing supports, the provision of case management for program participants who need a little extra assistance to keep stably housed. So this illustration kind of says a lot, but what I would like you to note is the relationships that landlords have to the voucher holder and to the housing authority. The health of the Housing Choice Voucher Program is dependent on this important partner, Tempe landlords. I appreciate your time this afternoon, and I'm happy to address any questions.
Thank you so much, Irma. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, this is an excellent presentation. You're doing a great job. Keep up the good work. What I want to ask you about is, so if someone is renting their house out, let's say they have a rental house, and they have people that are in need of affordable housing in there, and they can't quite cover, the people that are living there can't quite cover the entire mortgage or whatever, they can reach out to you guys to help with that, to supplement that rent?
So as it pertains to mortgages and needing supplement for...
Maybe mortgage is a bad... But go ahead, go ahead. Well, let's say that there's no mortgage, but just, but the market rate is not what they can pay. So how would that work?
So the Housing Choice Voucher Program starts with the waitlist, which by the way is open right now. It's open for a couple more days this week, so if anybody needs housing rental assistance, please, by all means, apply for the waitlist. But once someone has a Housing Choice voucher and they seek a unit in the market, right? And so they would find a landlord willing to take the voucher, and they would pay 30% to 40% of their income towards their rent, and everything else we would pick up, up to a certain point, which are those payment standards that were passed by this council a couple of months ago, effective in January. Does that help?
Yes, I think so. So it would make up for what they could rent, if they could rent it to people that like can, they can afford it, excuse me, but they rent it to people that can't afford to make what they could do on the market, then that difference could be made up for the landlords.
That is the definition of this particular program, yes. And to speak to folks that might be behind on their mortgage and need that type of assistance, they would seek that from the Tempe, by TCAA. And they have not only rental assistance available to help people get caught up on their rent if they fall in behind, but they also do the same thing with mortgage assistance.
Okay, very good. I appreciate the clarification.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hodge?
You know, I'm excited, very excited. Thank you so much. This, as I tell everybody before, I'll say it again, this is very personal to me because I'm sitting here today talking about it, and I remember walking into the Section 8 house and filling out for it and receiving it a year and a half later. So I know how it feels, and everything that you're doing is only enhancing the chances of everybody getting off. Everybody's not in the same predicament I was to walk away from it. So people do need that help. Thank you so much for everything you do. My question is, I know that we opened it up, but how much more people are now able to be on it, on the voucher system? And is it still the same, the ratio, like, because I heard that it's like, it's not about, it used to be that if you had a boy and a girl, you could get two bedrooms, but it's not like that anymore. So how is that, how is that system set up now? Because I heard it's different. And how many more new people do we have on the voucher system?
So I'm happy to report that earlier today, when I found out our numbers for the waitlist, is that what you're speaking of? The waitlist opening? We had over 7,500 folks who have applied for the waitlist.
Okay, that just makes my heart feel great. All right. I know we're going to have our work cut out for us to find 7,500 places for them to be placed, but that is, you know, step one, that we got them on the waiting list.
Right. Please remember, we will be holding a lottery, so of all of the people who apply for the program, we will be selecting 3,000 to be on the waitlist. And then that's about a two- to three-year wait to be offered a voucher.
Yeah, no, that's...
With regard to your question regarding occupancy standards, so how many people to a bedroom? Currently, we've been practicing two heartbeats to a bedroom, regardless of gender, regardless of age. We, I told you, we are undergoing a full policy administrative plan review, and one of the areas that we thought we can improve is in offering the head of household their own bedroom, and then following the two hearts to each bedroom scenario.
Yeah, because I know I had a neighbor who, they rent their house out for it, and it was the same way. She had, she had four kids, and it was just two, to a heartbeat. That's why I asked that question, because I know that it was like that for her. She had boys and girls, and they were all sharing rooms together. So it is different, and she had to share a room with her daughter because it is two, to a bedroom. So just, just a quick question on that one. Thank you so much. As I said, I am so honored, and anything I can do to help, you know I will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Councilmember Garland?
Hi, thank you. One of the things, one of the slides that you had, you were talking about the Damage Mitigation Fund that you're thinking about putting together. I think that's a great idea. Is that different, or would it be in addition to what Home Inc. does?
It is very similar. And actually, I would even go so far as to say that Mike Schor has inspired it.
Oh, good. Okay, great. Because I think it's a wonderful program, because when we had, I think it's like two years ago, we invited landlords to come to, I think it was Escalante Center, to try to encourage them to be a part of this program. That's one of the things that we were saying, this is great, Home Inc. will help you if there are damages there. When we were in DC last week, we were meeting with congressmen and senators, and we were asking for more money to help us with this program, to help Section 8 funding. We were also asking for landlord incentives money, and so we were out there trying to do what we can, because that's where, we do need that help. We do need to incentivize what we can. And then the question that I had is, so the housing vouchers that we have and the lottery that we have, what do the people do that do not get picked for that lottery? So all those names still stay on the waitlist if, by some miracle, we have a place that we can put all 3,000 people, then you go to 3,001 if we still have funding available?
Councilmember Garland, so what happens is the 3,000 are invited to then be a part of our waitlist. The balance of the folks will be invited to apply the next time that the waitlist is open.
Okay. And then one of the things that I heard that I, I thought that the waitlist that we have and the voucher program we have are just for Tempe residents, no farther than Mayor Copa County. I would just, I heard that we are getting some from other states. Is that true?
That would absolutely be true. I did see the article that was published, I believe, by USA Today, where they featured the city of Glendale and how a number of people applying for their waitlist come from all over the country. And that is, in fact, the reality of the waitlists for even our housing authority. I would be happy to do the analysis once we close the waitlist, to be able to explain from where folks are applying from, but there are no provisions that disallow someone that doesn't live in the city of Tempe for applying for our program. But I will tell you that our program do hold preferences for those who live and work in Tempe.
Okay, that's what I was going to lead to, because I wanted, I mean, I want to help everybody, and I want everybody housed, but I really want to focus on the people within our community. So thank you. That's what I was going to try to get to. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, can you expand a little bit about the Energy Equity Program that you had listed? Tell me more about that.
I'd love to. Thank you. When I was talking to councilmembers Garland and Hodge, they were bringing to my attention the difficulties that many low-income residents have in being able to afford their utilities. And it was dovetailing off of a different, another conversation where I was also considering or exploring the idea of being able to offer like green rehab programming with our Community Development Block grant, where we will allow home, where we would help finance for homeowners green updates to their houses. Of course, anyone who would be eligible for this program, that would be eligible, would be low-to-moderate-income residents here in the city of Tempe, and this would allow them to maybe, you know, upgrade their windows, upgrade their appliances to Energy Star, you know, those LED lights all over their house, or whatever, those green housing updates that could be made to a home. And then we started talking about energy costs that are passed on to low-income people, in particular, voucher holders. And so that is the particular conversation that I had approached sustainability and resilience with.
Have you been working with your colleagues in the sustainability and resilience area with Brayden and his team?
We have had, we've had one discussion about this. So yes.
I would encourage you to stay in communication with them.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Hodge?
Okay. Last time, they said they couldn't hear me, so I think I can be here at this time. My, I have a question. So it brings to what Vice Mayor was saying. If we have someone on the voucher program and say something happens, because a lot of the times you can lose your job while you're still on the voucher program, you know, or something decreases, are they eligible to do like TCAA, like the Tempe Action Community when they do the rental assistance and that? Or is that separate because they're on the voucher program that they can't? Or even if they come short on their utilities, because they have both the utilities and rental, are they still qualified for it because they're on the voucher program? Does that disqualifies them, or are they still qualified for it?
Great question. A couple of things. So when, let's say, for example, a household loses their income, what will happen with our programming is that their portion of their rent will be reduced, oftentimes to zero, if there's legitimately no money coming into the household. If they happen to also be behind on their rent or their utilities, absolutely, they are qualified for TCAA assistance.
Oh, that's good. I just hope that they, that that's out there, that they know that, because I think that some people have this ideal that if they're on the voucher program, that they're not qualified for other Tempe programs that we have out.
They most certainly are.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on council, any further comments or questions? Irma?
Great job.
Great job. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, item 3B, Opportunities for Public Art on Mill Avenue Underpass. I'm going to call up Brendan Ross, our Deputy Community Services Director for Arts and Culture, for a presentation. And Craig Hayton, welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Members of council, Craig Hayton, Community Services Director. I have the pleasure of joining Brendan Ross, Deputy Community Services Director with Arts and Culture today. We're excited to talk about opportunities for public art with the Mill Avenue Underpass. The public arts team, as you know, is a passionate, small but mighty team. A year ago, it was Rebecca Blum-Rotham by herself, but now there's two additional team members as coordinators that are helping out with Shar and Christine. So there is a significant amount of work that their team is doing over the next 18 months. We anticipate that the public art collection is going to grow by 35% within the city, which is a significant contribution to our community, but also will embark on our first public arts master plan. It's really going to help serve, to provide a vision and cohesion moving forward. But we really do appreciate the opportunity to provide an update on one specific opportunity that is ahead of us here today. So I want to frame the presentation around Performance Measure 3.17 that sits under Quality of Life. Much of what we do within Community Services and our team focuses on improving quality of life, not solely, but that is where the majority of our charge is. And today's presentation is focused on Performance Measure 3.17, which focuses on the quality of community service programs. Public arts certainly being a key portion of that. And just want to identify on the side of many of our slides tonight, we're going to highlight a few of the artworks that are in our public art collection as well. So we'll balance in and out of providing information and pictorial views of what we have within a very diverse portfolio within the city. A quick outline of where we're headed, I'm going to provide just some contextual outline. I'm sure, Mayor and council, you're very keenly aware of where the Mill Avenue Underpass is, but for folks that may not be familiar, I want to provide some pictures of it. It may help also provide some key contextual views of what the opportunities that lie ahead of us and some of the considerations that we have, so it sets the stage for that. Want to scratch the surface on some examples that we found just even nationally of what's available with some underpasses, and then the all-important process and timeline. Certainly, we'll leave time for questions and discussion at the end, but if you have any questions or discussion that you want to stop us in the middle of the presentation, please feel free to do so. So just a quick overview, I've got a Google Map slide and then some Google images. The overpass or the underpass that we see here is situated between 13th Street and Broadway Road on Mill Avenue. We are going to be kind of progressing backwards to the north as we go through some of these pictures, but it opens up really to two key areas within the city with Tempe High on the south, but also opens up to downtown Tempe, Mill Avenue, but also crosses past Burchett Park and Gamage first and foremost as it heads north. And as you can see, it's a pretty unique space. We have a lot of exposed aggregate. As on the western side, we've got a hard shoulder with a little bit of a sidewalk just beyond that barrier, and then some planters that are in some raised planter levels that we can see some varying levels of landscape. And then on the eastern side, that is really backs up to more of a residential area, on the far right of this slide, is really a pretty solid wall. There is no sidewalk that's there, so beyond that sidewalk barrier or that wall barrier on the right-hand side of the bike lane, we do have a pretty vertical wall that leads us into that underpass. We see under the underpass, we've got both exposed aggregate concrete on the wall that sometimes suffers from some random graffiti tagging. The transportation team certainly does a great job keeping that clean where they can on that unique surface, but then we have some more traditional concrete on the underside of the underpass. And then as we back up even more, we can see additional scale. It's a pretty lengthy space, almost 1,000 feet, with a lot of similar attributes as we pull through, but obviously, the depth is a bit more significant. And then as we, as I mentioned previously, on the north side, it opens up to the unique architecture of Frank Lloyd Wright, a key consideration. But then on the south side, we have Tempe High School over on the west side of the road, and then, as I mentioned previously, we have some residential areas on the west side of the road, or excuse me, on the east side of the road. So I'm going to turn it over to Brendan now to go through the details for the opportunities that are ahead of us with this key update.
Thank you, Craig, and good evening, Mayor and council. It's always good to be up here to talk about arts and culture. This particular opportunity tonight, I think is, it's timely to be talking about this. We know that it's, frankly, it's a bit of an ugly spot in the city, and it's well-visited by traffic. It's, as Craig pointed out, adjacent to the hospital and schools, and so the community is, you know, experiences the site on a daily basis in some, many cases. The significance of the connection to the Frank Lloyd Wright architecture is also an opportunity, really, to, at a broader helicopter view, make some connections in terms of placemaking in relationship to a nationally significant piece of architecture here. And as part of that opportunity... And as part of that opportunity, we do have some funding available that with the right process can make it a very worthwhile investment. There, along with this, are a range of considerations. It's a relatively complicated site as for public art artists to work through here. It's, the exposed aggregate itself collects road grime and dust. And so we, as we move through a process of considering what sort of art might go there, we also need to think about what looks as a very vibrant color, how it might weather in that environmental context over time. And so considerations about that are important. The, whatever solution of public art is inevitably going to give cause to a range of engineering and transportation considerations, the stability of the structure, the nature of the surfaces, and indeed, the very idea of accessing it in order to install the artwork. Depending on the solution, it could involve weeks or months of closing one lane of the road. And with the hospital just adjacent there, that will necessitate some time and planning to work with our stakeholders there around that. There are a range of options there in terms of not only murals, but sculptures, integrated metal, and other sorts of elements that can be approached with an artist's engagement there. I wanted to just to share a few examples of artwork here locally and nationally. And this is not so much to provide a menu to choose from, but obviously to illustrate that as we engage with experienced artists in the process, the very value of artists it will be to open up our imaginations to what is possible and to help us to see anew that site and its potential to realize some sort of vibrant and energetic outcome that reflects who we are as a city. This local artwork here involves a number of integrated powder-coated metal elements, for example, along the concrete side there. This example shows the use of lighting design to take a creative approach to the use of that, to activate the site at night. This examples integrates lighting and painted elements. And so the benefit of this is there's a daytime and nighttime experience. And there are examples around the nation like this where interactive components can respond to the behavior of traffic or pedestrians, even in terms of the light or other digital behavior. Here's a range of other ideas around murals and other interpretive approaches that can draw the eye in different directions around the site. And once again, just give us a sense of artists' imaginative responses here. And a further example about using a long linear wall to treat the site here at scale. This one integrates a range of metal elements, of lighting, and I think there's some sculpture tucked in there somewhere as well, once again, thinking about different experiences, day, night, and different angles. So that just gives you a bit of a taste and gets the imagination running about as we enter into a process with artists, what we might realize here. This timeline gives you an outline of an ideal flow of how this might take place. The proposal here is to launch a national competition, which invites artists, local, state, and nationwide to submit for, their qualifications for such a project. Of this scale, the degree of experience is fairly significant that we would be looking for and relative to the investment and scale of site. And then we would move through a process involving a community expert panel to reduce it down to a shortlist. And we would invite those shortlisted artists to produce rendered concepts. And so we'd likely end up with three concepts and then we would be able to choose from those. And in this timeline, we would be looking at fall this year to be able to come out publicly to announce the selected artist, but also to take that design to the community, to build some excitement anticipation of its realization over the forthcoming months into 2024. So in summary, I think there is a great opportunity here to beautify this site through public art, through a national competition. There are some considerations we need to step through carefully, through our city staff here, engineering, transport in particular. But coming out the other side later this year with this timeline, we'd be in a position to celebrate a selection of a new artwork concept.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I've got a number of people who had hands up. Let me first start with the guy I know who's been talking about arterial walls since he and I first got elected to council back in 2008. That's Councilmember Navarro.
Good segue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, it, obviously, right in everything I talk about with right-ofaways and everything like that. But on top of that, this goes back way back when, when we were talking about character areas. This was actually one of the main things I mentioned way back when about the entrance into the downtown area. That bridge, that underpass, has the potential, just what we're talking about today, for some artistic gateway into the downtown area. Because when you see that, I love the images that you have here, like the lit underneath, the LEDs, and utilizing that as the draw. Because once you go past there, you are in a different area. You truly are in the downtown ASU area. And I think that needs to be celebrated and however artistically, you know, it's done. What a great opportunity. I'm excited for this. I think that's, it's going in the right direction. I think this, once again, it's what we talk about when character areas, we talk about the gateways because every neighborhood is a little bit different and unique. And I think this is a perfect way of celebrating that, especially celebrating the entrance in the downtown area. So fully support it. I want to be struck when this gets designed out. I do, like I said, the light, especially at night, the LED, the coordination, the artistic design, I think is huge. Maybe I'll ask one question. Is there any concerns with, is that our bridge or is that Union Pacific?
There's a range of considerations around the ownership of different parts of that site, which can involve ADOT, the railway, and the city. So, look, you've got me on a, I'm pretty sure that's, that belongs to the railway, that, the bridge part of that there, but I would need to check that.
However, we can work with them. I hope we can work with them well. And I'll tell you this. Because I think it's so important, I think that, you know, if we're running short funding, I hope we can do what we can, what we want to do and not cut it short, if you catch my drift. You know, I'd rather we do it right and not just do it just to do it, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Let me next go to Councilmember Hodge.
Yes, thank you so much. You know what my next question is. I heard you say national, but are we going to incorporate some of our fine artists that are under the age of 18 that actually we just went from an art festival? That's something I would love to see, that part of it is about the youth too. So to incorporate the school districts in there to make sure we get some parts of them in there too. And my second question is, I know that we're talking about the bridge on Mill Avenue, but we also have the one on McClintock. Is that something that we're thinking about in the future? Because that's another underpath that you go underneath that is super not pleasant to drive underneath and look at, the one on McClintock and Broadway going up that way direction too. That's another one I just wanted to put out there.
One thing really quickly, actually, if you could actually address Councilmember Hodge's first point, but then to the second point. Clarence, I'm assuming we're allowed to have that conversation. I know we're talking about the Mill Avenue Underpass, but we are still talking about sort of the beautification of underpasses throughout the city. Are we able to talk about McClintock as well?
Mr. Mayor, council, yeah, I believe that would be encompassing.
Wonderful. Because I think, I appreciate, because what I'd like to do then on your second question, Councilmember Hodge, is sort of go around here and see what councilmembers think about adding that to the scope of work as well. So if you could actually kind of address her first question, then we'll, I'll go around and see what people think.
Okay.
Thanks for that question, councilmember. As you know, in arts and culture, one of the four priorities is around arts, education, and literacy as a foundation for what we do. And this site has the potential to create a great inspiration for the work of students in the adjacent school there. While there are some specific considerations about how we might involve students in the making of this particular artwork because of, for example, closing off laneways and getting on high lifts and things, there are, a good next step would be for us to meet with the school, to inform them of the project and to ask teachers what their needs are for learning and teaching needs in terms of art and in relationship to the project, and to move from that point forward. I think just to also let you know that on the table at the moment is a plan to increase perhaps significantly an investment in funding artists who work directly with schools and to redesign the current schools grants program in such a way that it puts the power in teachers' hands to identify what they would like to do with the investment, who they'd like to work with and how. And so this would be an opportunity to connect with the schools and talk with them through that.
Well, that's a great idea. And just to let you know that a good thing is Tempe High School is not doing summer school this year, so you will have the time while the kids are out. You won't have as much traffic in that time period while they're out for the summer. So that might help with work, you know, with the traffic going up and down. Because a lot of that traffic does go right in, feed right into the high school. So, but the time period I was looking at, some of that is going to be while the kids are out of school too. So that's a good thing to let you know about. And I will connect you with the art director at our school. So I'll get with my council lady and we can get that, that conversation going. Because that, after that arts program a couple days ago, I've had almost 40-something kids reach out to me throughout the school district saying, hey, we want to do this. We heard about this. And so I just want to connect you. It may not be that they do the direct, but maybe they can submit an art form that can be used or something. So I'll get that conversation going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Let me go around before I go to Vice Mayor Adams here, just to talk about the McClintock Underpass as well. I think that's a great idea and that's something that I would absolutely support if we're doing one and we're talking about kind of doing a local slash national competition. It seems to make sense to kind of do that for both as opposed to saying, hey, do this now, but then we'll come back in six months and talk about the other one. So I would be totally in support of what Councilmember Hodge suggested, not only doing Mill Avenue, but also doing McClintock. What do other people think here? Everyone?
Agreed. Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Everyone else? I see heads nodding. That's good. Okay, so it sounds like we've got consensus on that one too, to not only do the Mill Avenue Underpass, but also to do the one on McClintock Drive as well.
So, Mayor, if I can clarify, what we're talking about is running concurrent projects at the same time. So if that's the desire of the council, we can certainly.
Would that, from a logistical standpoint, Craig, Brendan, be easier for you to do it at the same time?
We've had some initial conversations about other opportunities that certainly could present themselves very similar to this. And I think there's, there may appear to be some concurrences, some efficiencies that we can pick up. Keep into the timeline that we have. It may be, maybe some wisdom and a slight stagger so that we can make sure we get some good momentum on this. We, as we mentioned previously, we do have a significant amount of projects that we are in the midst of and we just want to make sure that we're delivering those as well.
Absolutely.
So we certainly can, we can follow up of what that would look like and maybe a packet update.
That sounds great.
In the weeks to come, but that would probably be at least something that we would like for discussion or consider. So this is a unique enough project that we want to make sure, as Councilmember Navarro said, that we're really getting the momentum and getting this going right. But they're also different enough that we want to make sure that we're soliciting input and learning from this one at the same time, if that would be the will of the council for consideration.
Everybody good? Cool, absolutely.
What I just said is if we're going to do it, we should start looking at that one too. Because if we're going to beautify the bridges and out, underpass, then why leave that one out?
Thank you. Brendan, anything that you want to add?
Let me go to Vice Mayor Adams and Councilmember Chin, then Councilmember Navarro.
So I'm just putting on my transportation hat right now. And so McClintock and Mill are both arterial streets. So we wouldn't want to do them at the same time because of traffic concerns. But I think the two, to do the one first, get that all buttoned up and then do the other one, I think would be very prudent. Also, I love, I love this idea. I love all the artwork. And I think it will just completely transition our entry to our city of Tempe downtown area. And so it's really, it's, this is very exciting. And I'm so glad that Councilmember Hodge brought up about the McClintock area too, the underbridge there to make that nice. And are those, what are the lapel pins? Are those dogs?
Thank you for asking, actually. This is produced by the public art team under Rebecca Blum-Rothman's leadership as manager here. And it's actually a replica of the artwork created by John Randall Nelson, a local Tempe artist who has a national reach in his work of an artwork up in the Mitchell Park neighborhood area here. And so it's on our GIS map online, which we'll actually be getting an update in the next couple of months as well. So people can go out and visit this at TrueScale.
And it's a, it's a dog, isn't it?
Yes, it is, with little wheels on it here. And it's even better in real life. Yeah.
Is it any possible you can find it for council to get some?
Absolutely. And we also have a badge which says, I love public art as well. So I noticed Mr. Chin's wearing one as well tonight, so.
Very good. I like it. And then maybe we could put a park attached to the dog also, so we could have another dog park. What do you think about that, Greg?
I love a good brainstorm. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's always scary when I start brainstorming. So anyway, to keep up the good work, this is really exciting and exactly what our city needs and deserves. So thank you for your hard work.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. My question was asked and answered.
All right. Sounds good. Councilmember Navarro?
Yeah, that, yeah, that was my only concern when we're talking about doing the bridges. I absolutely, I love that idea, but I want to make sure we're doing it right, so to speak, and we have enough funding going into the second one. So however that translates and making sure that we're, you know, doing our due diligence. And I love the fact, learn from the first one, see if we can do better on the second one, so to speak.
Sounds good. Anyone else? All right, just a quick comment on my end too. I just really appreciate this. I think this is great. I really love the notion of being able to incorporate more art into our community. We talk about a lot of the art installations that have happened in and around the downtown. It's something that people routinely will comment to, I know myself and many councilmembers, about just the sense of placemaking that it gives the community. And obviously, the ability to put money into a local or a national artist's pocket is something I know that's also very much a priority of this council as well. The last thing I was just going to say too is just, you know, many times, I know I'd asked for this item to be on the agenda and every now and then I have a good idea. But I will say, on this particular situation, I've got to give a shout out to Tim Palmer in the back, who's a lifelong Tempe resident, who was actually the person who brought this idea to be in the first place. So I cannot sit up here and claim this was something that came to me in a dream somewhere while I was sitting on the couch. It was something that Mr. Palmer, who has lived in the city of Tempe for his entire life, brought directly to me and said, it would be great if we could find a way to incorporate some public art into that Mill Avenue Underpass. And so now I would say, Mr. Palmer, we're getting a twofer. We're getting, we're getting Mill Avenue and we're getting McClintock. So thank you for, thank you for bringing your idea to the city of Tempe. I really appreciate it. Anyone else? All right, wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
All right. Next item on the agenda is called the audience for committee of the whole items. There are no items ready for city council direction or status update this evening. So I'll close that item and move on to item number five. Items ready for city council direction, status update, none. I will go to item 5B, which is council committees in progress, updates as needed. Are there any updates from councilmembers on items 5B1, 5B2, or 5B3? All right, seeing none. Then the next item on the agenda is future agenda items. Councilmembers may request that an agenda item be added to a future issue review session. And in accordance with the Arizona Open Meeting Law, there should be no discussion on the item other than to clarify the request. Are there any councilmembers wishing to have a future agenda item added? All right, hearing none, I'll close that discussion as well. The next item on the agenda is mayor's announcements and city manager's announcements. I don't have any this evening. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to briefly congratulate Marilyn DeRosa, our Engineering and Transportation Director. Today is her last day. She is retiring, almost 10 years of service with the city of Tempe and quite a few years of previous service with other cities as well. So wish her all the best in retirement. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, that moves us to item number eight, which is adjournment. The next scheduled work study session is scheduled for March 23rd, 2023. Have a good weekend, everyone.